I'd like to call the Select Board meeting of March 6, 2023, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please be seated, those that can. Thank you all for coming. First part of the meeting, we have signed the warrant and we can move on to the first appointment at 6:30, a hearing for the new Class II license for GMV Inc. and Vashon Motor Company Inc., doing business as Byrider, Dartmouth and Vashon Motor Company. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, I think we have representative here this evening.
Introduce yourself first, please.
Good evening. Gregory Lawrence. I'm an attorney with offices in Attleboro, excuse me, and I also have here with me Lance Vashon. So, we're applying for two Class II used car motor vehicle sales licenses. It's at 331 State Road. There is an existing Byrider business there now. It will be a Byrider as well. They, the existing business will be surrendering its license, so we're asking for a net gain of one. It's two corporate entities. We have provided all of the corporate information. We have posted bonds for two licenses. We've provided the notification to the butters, the background information for a quarry, et cetera. Both entities are owned by the Vashon family. They've been in business since 1945. They operate multiple locations in multiple states, and they use the same business model in another location. So, what we're asking the board today is to grant those two Class II licenses and to allow them to conduct business in the town and be a good member of the community. So, I don't know if there are any questions from me or if you'd like to hear from the applicant himself as to the family business.
Excuse me, we would, but one quick comment. Four of us here are present, and selectman Frank Gracie is here on Zoom attending the meeting, and he's up there listening and can hear us. Okay.
You got to open up the hearing and then vote for, against, close.
Okay. We're going to open up the hearing for the people present. We need a motion for that?
No, just open up the hearing.
Okay. The public hearing is open. Comments from the Select Board first. Anybody?
Well, I only have one question. Is there an extra, is there an extra, what are they, an extra license involved?
Yes.
Is it available?
Yes. I'll just add, historically, we've been presented with requests for licenses where it's multiple owners on one lot, and the board has denied those licenses because there's one lot and two ownerships. And speaking with Mr. Vashon, it's going to be one owner with two businesses on one lot. So, I was going to recommend to the board, if they do approve the licenses, that they approve it contingent on one ownership group owning both businesses being on one lot.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Ms. Brooks?
I have a question. When you mentioned that they have multiple locations in multiple states, do you have this model in other states as well?
We have this exact same model in Massachusetts and Attleboro with the Byrider business and a Vashon business at the same property. And that's been operating for some three or four years now successfully.
I was pretty just curious as to why you need two and what's the necessity of having two as opposed to one?
Maybe you should get up. Mr. Vashon should get up.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind?
Sure. Please do.
So, I've been running the Byrider in South Attleboro for about 22 years, and it always was fine until the pandemic hit. And we couldn't find the cars we needed, and we couldn't sell as many vehicles. So, we, through the Byrider program, we can only sell through the Byrider program. It's a franchise, like any franchise, you have to use their model. So, I couldn't sell retail to the public with normal banks. I had to go through only the Byrider bank. So, my general manager approached me about four years ago and said, hey, we should be bringing in some outside banks as well to try to get the sales up to be able to keep all the employees and to be able to keep, stay in business. So, having the second license in the building allowed us to go through typical banks, and when people came in, we could service more people and not turn them away because we didn't have the vehicle they were looking for or the payment they could afford. So, it really saved our business in South Attleboro, but probably would have been gone by now. It allowed us to sell twice as many vehicles again and to be able to keep everyone employed. So, that's what I'm trying to duplicate here as well, because I don't think just the Byrider alone would be sufficient to be able to stay in business.
Have there been any issues in South Attleboro because you have the two together?
No. No, none at all, really. People were just happy. They come in and they're happy to get a car out of the way. With the Byrider program, it's like we help people that, you know, don't have credit, and we lend them our own money. So, when we didn't want to do that with people, we would normally send them away and say, no, sorry, we can't help you. But now, we pretty much can help everyone with any kind of credit, so.
What about the warranties? Who's going to warranty these products?
Two warranties. Oh, Byrider warranties the Byrider vehicles.
All of the vehicles on that lot?
Yep. You mean after, warranty after I sell them? Yep. And through the Vashon sales, it gets an extended service contract.
I see.
So, mostly through credit acceptance or, you know, Bristol County Savings Bank or whoever we're doing business with at the time.
Right, right.
Sell the customer a warranty as well. So, and just so you know, the current owner of the Byrider here passed away, and his son is running it now. And his son, it's not really his passion, so he called me and said, hey, you know, I'm going to, don't want to be in this business anymore. I don't want to let my employees go. Would you be interested in taking it over? And that's how we started this process.
That's good.
And now I have another question. So, if I go to Byrider, Vashon, how will I know which is a Byrider car and which is a Vashon car?
Currently, we have them separated in the South Attleboro lot. They're tagged accordingly. And they're really a different, they're really a different car, too. The Vashon cars are a little more expensive cars, a little less mileage. The Byrider has to fit a program where everyone pays $100 a week for four years. With Vashon, I can go more six, seven years to get people in their payments. But the Byrider is strictly, you know, by the rules for.
So, the number of spots that the Byrider currently has is all you're still going to be able to use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, basically, most of the inventory is owned by Byrider. And then, if we, if they don't qualify, and we want to sell them that particular car through Vashon, then we'll immediately sell it from one to the other. So, it works out really well.
Okay.
In South Attleboro.
So, the vehicles, they're, they have, each car is either a Vashon product or a Byrider product. Is that marked?
Yes.
On the windows?
Mostly, it's mostly Byrider.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
But I mean, you will have some Vashon cars.
Yeah. Yep.
Be marked on the window.
The maroni label on the side with the price.
They'll see that.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on the Select Board? This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public here who have any questions to bring up? Want to step up to the mic? Let us know who you are and.
Yes, sir. Kyle Ross, representing here tonight, Kitty Campus Incorporated, 26 Old Westport Road. We're in Abuda. I just have a question for the applicant. Will there be any change to any landscaping, grading, or anything that would affect drainage or anything like that?
No. It's the exactly the same. One thing I'm doing is.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
No, no change to the exterior. It'll all be exactly the same. Same signage. I mean, nothing is changing. Interior will, but that's.
Satisfy you, okay?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? We need to close the public hearing.
For, and then you look for people before.
For and against.
For and then against. And then, if there's nothing, then you close the hearing.
Okay. Okay. Anybody out here who is in the public, who's for the, for the change? Anyone against? Okay, therefore, we will close the public hearing? Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Now, we have any other comments from the Select Board before we, before we vote?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer and the application for the both licenses on the condition that both businesses are separated and the automobiles that are tagged per, properly, as per business.
I'll second that.
You might want to add, then, that the ownership stays the same.
Right, and the, right, and there's a single ownership for both. No dual ownership. No two different ownerships.
Second.
Just for point of clarification, the existing Byrider license will be surrendered, so it's two new licenses.
Two, okay, correct.
Owned by the same owner.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Approve the two licenses. Change, add the word new. Get rid of.
Okay, we have a second. Any comments or questions on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Unanimous? Thank you very much, and.
Great. Good luck.
If it works out well for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, there's Shayna out there. Say hello to Shayna.
Make sure, make sure that Frank's volume is turned up. Okay, I did hear him.
I heard him.
I want to make sure.
Okay, Frank, turn the volume.
That's Peter Sofar.
Peter.
Yeah, we can hear you, Frank. Good.
Okay, next. On to new business. Temporary trailer permit for 14 Smith Avenue.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Charlie Ashdown. I live at 14 Smith Ave. We're in the process of demolishing the existing building. We're going to build a new building there through all the permits required for that operation. We're requesting today a temporary permit for a trailer to be on site during the summer so that we can enjoy the property while they're building the house.
Do you have a timeframe?
For the house?
Yes.
For the completion of the house, it's always a, it's a guess.
Well, an estimate.
We think probably by the end of 2023. That is a.
Optimistic.
Really a guess.
Any other comments or questions?
Is the, you said you wanted to place a trailer on there for the summer, so I'm anticipating at some point in time after September, the trailer will be removed, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So, if we grant, if we grant the approval for the trailer between the months of May and the end of September, that would be comfortable for you?
Yes.
You know, yeah, from the beginning of May to the end of September.
May 1 to September 30.
Because we never know. May have a nice Indian summer, and you want to stay down here. I don't blame them.
We're going to come visit.
September 30, does that work for you? Is it long enough?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
May 1 to September 30, is that what I hear?
Yeah. I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the trailer permit for the beginning of May 1, 2023, and ending on September 30 of 2023.
Glad to second that.
Second. Any comments or questions on the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Passed. Good luck.
Great. Thank you, sir. Good luck.
We'll be by in the grand opening of the House. Okay, next on the new business, annual town election warrant approval. Our esteemed town clerk is here.
I am. So, I'm here tonight seeking approval for the annual town election warrant. I should have been with your packet. It's pretty straightforward. It's the same information that we had presented not more than a month or so ago, but we're gearing up, and it's less than a month away, and we're getting really excited.
Rightfully so.
Same locations?
Correct, as November.
As November, okay. And they will be posted online, just to make sure?
They already are posted online.
Just in case anybody has any questions.
So, they're online. They can call the town clerk's office. They can email the town clerk's office. If anybody has a question about where they're voting, it can be looked up based on your address on the Secretary of the Commonwealth's office, or we're always happy to look it up for people.
And it'll also be on the brand-new Dartmouth, Town of Dartmouth webpage?
So, it already is, but we will continue updating that. We're waiting on the printing of our ballots, and then sample ballots will make their way also onto our new website. I'm quite proficient at posting things already.
Wonderful.
I hope you would indulge me to just note a couple of dates. Saturday, March 25th, is the last date to register to vote, and so the town clerk's office will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The last date to request a mail-in ballot is March 30th, just so we have enough time to get it out to people and get it back. And then, the last time to vote absentee in person will be April 3 until 12:00 p.m. in the town clerk's office.
Will there be any early voting?
There will not be early voting for this. We just.
So, it's absentee and in person?
Correct. So, the absentee can be absentee in person, or they can mail in the application, or there's no excuse mail-in ballot requests. So, we are getting a fair amount, but not as many as I hope. We have 22,000 registered voters, and I probably don't have 100 requested yet, so I'm sure people are working at getting them into me so that we can have a huge push.
Do we consider the electronic signage around town to make some of those announcements?
So, we'll make some requests to do that as we get closer, and we'll follow all of the policies that are in place to do that. But we've been putting things out on our website, but we'll make sure to update it as it gets closer and now that we have a solidified ballot.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the warrant as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any discussion or questions on that motion? Ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Great job. Ruling right along, we are now up to the Police Department Policy Review and Approval. And I guess we got the big boss here.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I submitted some information regarding our policy manual. What I was hoping to do, we started embarking on rewriting the policies a few years back. The policy manual has been rewritten, and I wanted to submit it as a completed packet. So, what I've learned over time is it's never going to be completed. We're constantly working on it. We're revising policies, adding policies, and so forth to maintain compliance with federal state laws, mass accreditation, and best practices. So, there's two issues I'm trying to address here, is getting the current policy manual approved, and then what are we going to do about the revisions? They come out on a regular basis, and to be able to submit them, to have those approved as they're issued as well. The manual is available online. I provided Mr. McGinnis access to that, but it was more like, let's have a discussion on how you want to proceed with the approval of that. There's 238 policies and procedures currently, multi-page each, so it's, it's a large document to digest.
Ms. McGinnis?
Has the policy ever gone before Town Council for review, just to make sure that it fits with federal and state law?
So, Town Council has received policies usually related to public information requests. Just recently, I sent him the entire policy manual, but he was not requested to review it. Generally, if there's a question on law, he would review it. Otherwise, we work with a company to help us with the policies, to make sure they're in compliance. They send out regular updates. As laws change, they update the policies for us. In addition to that, we are accredited through the Mass Accreditation Commission. Every three years, we have to apply for re-accreditation, where they send assessors. It's a multi-day event where they come in and review our policies as well.
So.
We are accredited again?
We are, we are, yes, we have. We've been accredited since 2012.
The way I understand it, we have a large book of policies that have been in place for a long time, and between the mass accreditation and the company you use and your own people inside, they've been approved for use in legal in the state of Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Yes.
And that's part of the service they offer, which is to protect us that these are, these are laws that will, that pass muster.
Yeah, they're reviewed by the company. Like I said, they also provide with updates. So, as things change, which they change readily.
But specifically for the Commonwealth of Mass as well?
Yes, and federally.
Both, but.
Yep, both of them. As well as mass accreditation, too.
I mean, I'll be honest with you. I know coming before us, because we're.
Quasi.
Police commissioners. But, I mean, I don't have the qualifications to say that these policies are correct. I really don't. And I would not want to do that, because it's just, I would think that any type of policy changes that need to be corrected should be vetted through, you know, like you said, that company, and also the Massachusetts Police Chiefs Association, I believe it is.
Accreditation Commission.
Accreditation Committee. That point, I think it would be, I would be 98% comfortable in saying yes. Some policies, though, I think should be at least reviewed by Town Council, just to make sure, even if it's just on a sporadic basis. And I wouldn't have a problem with that at all, you know. It's just, I think, coming, basically, five laymen, when it comes to police work, that just, you know, telling, telling you that the policies are good and bad, that's just something that I'm not very comfortable with. And I would be more comfortable, you know, having, you know, what the process you go through, you know.
Ms. Brooks?
I, my question is, how are the officers trained in the new policies?
So, the policies are sent out electronically to the officers and to review. They're directed to their supervisors with any questions. Certain policies that are more high liability generally would have a roll call style training, or during annual in-service use of force and so forth, would be trained. Firearms policies. In addition to that, we have, we call them training bulletins. They're questions that are asked of the officers. They're given a scenario, and they need to apply specific parts of the policy to answer a question related to the policy. And there's 20 to 30 of those per month that the officers go through, which would be considered training on the policies as well.
Thank you.
And how long have we been doing business with this company now?
About three years.
And the reason, and before that, was there a reason to not use the, use the other company prior to this?
Prior to that, I don't believe we used a company at all. We just wrote them in-house.
Okay.
There's a lot to it.
Right.
Which is why I kind of reached out to a company to handle it, yes.
I would, I would suggest, my suggestion would be that I'd like to see maybe our motion contain something that says, because we are, because we are laymen and because you have an accreditation and a company that does this full-time, that we can then support their efforts and, and would ensure us that the, we're protected in terms of the letter of the law in what we're doing.
As long as it's properly vetted, basically.
Yeah, I, the suggestion of the motion just doesn't sit well with me, but I would more prefer to make a motion that we approve the Dartmouth Police Department policies and procedures based upon the information presented by Chief Lebeck in his letter dated March 3, 2023.
Okay, I'll second that, then.
I would say that it troubles me a bit, but I'm one person in a group of five. I'd like to have this language added, that it's been, that we have protection based on the service that the chief made it a point to pick a new service because he thought it was important. And I think.
Was there part of the decision-making? Is that what you?
They are listed on the letter.
They're listed in the letter.
Right.
Lexipol is listed in the letter.
Police Accreditation Commissioner. Okay, so, your, their motion is going to refer to the letter?
That's what.
Yep.
That's what the motion says. It refers to, based upon the information provided by Chief Lebeck in the letter dated March 3, 2023.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second.
Second. Any other discussion, comments?
It's Frank.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it to us. Next on the list for new business, Library Board of Trustees Membership Charter Change Discussion. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so at a previous meeting to talk about the Library Director Search Committee, the topic came up, oh, and the vacancy, the recent vacancy in the Library Board of Trustees, the topic came up by the board of possibly having a warrant article on this year's warrant to discuss reducing the number of trustees from six to five. The Chair of the Trustees, Stanley Beluziak, said he was going to go back and meet with the trustees. I think he has. He's had some discussion about it, so you wanted to have him back to have a further discussion.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
He's here.
Come on up.
What was the, what was the result?
You are?
Stan Beluziak, and the Chair of the Dartmouth Library Trustees.
You had that discussion with your group?
We did. We were at our last meeting in February. We had one member absent. I brought the subject and both the idea of permanently cutting the number to five and also to leave the current vacancy unfilled. No one seemed to oppose it. I've since spoken to the person who was absent. She didn't seem to have any objection. So, we're meeting again next Tuesday, and I have that on the agenda. And my intention would be to put it to a vote, both issues.
Okay. So, we have to wait until we hear on that vote?
What is, what is the deadline for a town meeting article inclusion?
We've asked Council to start drafting the article.
Okay.
So, the middle of April.
Basically, it's the same, it's the language in the charter, except the number of six, just change it to five. That's basically it. So, there's not much to draft.
Yeah.
And I believe you probably have to vote on it also.
Right, right. We would need to vote it to include it on the town meeting warrant.
So, it all.
There are never any guarantees, but I don't anticipate any problem with us agreeing to it. And you can always put it on the warrant, and it can be withdrawn.
Right.
If need be.
Correct.
So, this whole process won't start until we hear from you and your group, Stanley?
Okay. Let me just.
It's March 27.
Yeah, let me just ask just one quick question. If it gets, gets put on the warrant for town meeting, and then town meeting votes in favor for it, we know it's going to go on the ballot the next, in April of 2024. Correct. Once that, once that happens, then I think, if I'm not mistaken, the existing trustees stay there, and then everybody has to run in 2025, where the top voter gets the three-year seat, the next, the second and third get the two-year seat, and then the fourth and fifth place get the three-year seat. If that's correct?
John, I think he's asking you.
Oh.
Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. I will confirm with the town clerk.
Yeah, because you can't, I mean, you, you can't change the, the number of the board, then all of a sudden kick the entire board off.
Correct.
Saying, okay, now you go, and then, you know, it's, so this is really a two-year process?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
For what it's worth, the first year, I had been a town meeting member for one year, and at the end of that year, I had to take out papers because the precincts had been reorganized.
Right.
So, everybody had to run again.
That happens every 10 years, so.
Yeah, but that's how that was done. It may be the same for.
Well, it's the same thing what happened up to this board. This board was three people up until at some point in time, and then it was five, and then the following year, then that's when you had, you know, I think it was about eight or nine people running, and then the top vote getter got five, and then went from there. That became, that became lot number one. Two and three got the two-year terms, and three and four, four and five got the one-year term, so. Okay.
So, our goal is to hear from you and get it on our agenda for the 27th of March.
Yeah.
Either way, we want to hear from you.
We meet next Tuesday evening. I'll send all of you an email after the meeting when I get home.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Stanley?
No, just thanks for your, for your help.
You've been here three or four meetings in a row, so thank you. You've been here three or four meetings in a row, so thank you.
Three in a row, and this is the year it's not finished, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you for doing this.
Okay. Good, that's progress. Next would be Water Quality Management Committee Charge Draft. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, so this topic came up at the last meeting about, as it relates to the Mass DEP's Title V Amendments. Ms. Brooks had recommended that perhaps the town form a committee to, an advisory committee to focus on water quality, on all aspects of water quality. Ms. Brooks worked with me to develop a draft committee charge for the board to review. Actually, Ms. Brooks did most of the drafting, so.
All right.
And now we've presented it here.
I think it's important enough that I would request that Mrs. Brooks read it to us.
Oh, certainly.
If you can hear it.
Certainly. So, it reads, "The general purpose, the committee, which is, as we said, it was the Dartmouth Water Quality Advisory Committee, shall work in conjunction with the Select Board, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Board of Public Works, Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee, and any other committee currently or in the future charged with the protection, preservation, and enhancement of surface and groundwater in or bounding the town of Dartmouth." The specific, whoops, the specific charge. I touched my screen, I'm sorry. The specific charge, "The committee will explore and pursue solutions to Dartmouth's water quality, including, but not limited to, our watersheds, groundwater, health of our ecosystems, and Buzzards Bay. The committee will review local and regional studies and investigations in areas that impact the town's water quality, leading to recommended actions for improvement. The committee will examine the efficiency and capacity of our wastewater system. The committee will share this information with the appropriate boards, committees, and commissions in order to create actionable items for short and long-term goals to maintain and/or improve our varied water systems. The committee would report to the Select Board on a quarterly basis, or more is needed. The department slash division assignment would be, fall under the Select Board Town Administrator, Board of Public Works, DPW, and Board of Health, Director of Public Health. Staff support would require the Director of Public Health, DPW Director, Town Administrator, and all other staff as required. Membership, the town, the Dartmouth Water Quality Advisory Committee shall consist of as many as twelve members, with the DPW Director, Board of Health Director, and Town Administrator serving as ex officio members. The voting membership shall include a Board of Public Works appointee, Select Board appointee, Conservation Commission appointee, Board of Health appointee, plus five at-large members of the community, preferably representing each of the town watersheds, air, watershed areas, Allen's Pond, Uponagansett Bay, Buzzards Bay, Slocom, Little River, and Westport River. At-large committee members shall serve a three-year term. Meetings to be called as needed, but not less frequently than once per month, to be held in a public place with the appropriate posting under the open meeting law. The committee shall follow Robert's Rules of Order."
Great.
I do ask, as having put this forth, I have not spoken with each of the department heads or committee chairs of the various committees listed, but certainly would, if you feel that that's necessary.
Reach out to them. Well, okay, let me, let's step back a moment, because that's kind of the protocol once we institute it, so. Any feedback or reactions to the letter itself?
Great job.
You mean the, the charge?
Yes, that too.
I venture to guess the DPW, Board of Health, and the Conservation Commission would not have a problem with this.
Right.
So, and this is something that's, you know, we've discussed going forward and-
It's a much broader charge than we know that we've been discussing with regularity, the DEP Title V issue.
Right.
This is a broader charge, although that will be one area that they're looking at, but this will also be looking at the CSOs in New Bedford, I mean, lots of-
I mean, you, you can't-
So, it's a broad-
You're right, you can't challenge what DEP is doing without coming up with a better plan. And that, and that's what I see this committee coming up with, is a better plan, not only to address, you know, the, the lack of reasonability by DEP, but also the other problems that contribute to the nitrogen loading. But, see, this isn't just the nitrogen loading situation. So, this would take in phosphorus, which is probably going to be the next target.
Composting?
Composting. Which, to be honest with you, as a community, we should have the right to say whether or not these commercial composting facilities come into town and damage our ecosystem. So, we've all seen the pictures of these. And if nobody has, I suggest you see the twenty-minute video, I believe it was done by Chris Michaud on composting. That in itself will open your eyes to a lot. Especially with, yeah, and especially with the algae blooms and the problems that, it's just very eye-opening, so.
So, this is a very broad-
And it should, but it has to be broad. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be focused like the Mass DEP Title V is, because that's just too focused on a, on a significant, on a significant problem in an insignificant manner, and also basically to where they're just going to absolve themselves from any type of responsibility. So, but-
I would also add that this is a clear message to not only our residents and town people, but to surrounding towns and to the state, that we are not bellyaching about just, you know, not having to take on these issues of the Title V. We want to clean up. We take responsibility for it. We're going to ask for help, but we, regardless of what happens, and there may be delays with what DEP happens, we're going to keep it going, keep the pressure on, and the message is clear that we're going to try, as a town, to address these issues, and I think that's what this does.
I think there's a lot of work that we can do collaboratively in looking at DEP, but also the, the things that Sean just mentioned. And there's been, you know, talk of data, so this group can review the data we have and ask for new data.
It's certainly our collaboration with the Buzzards Bay Coalition as well, which is a key ingredient to this whole package.
But I would also, I would also envision this committee at some point in time in the future, coming up to town meeting, requesting funds for testing.
Hundred percent.
You know, and updated testings. And also, basically, to contact the homeowners that have wells and asking them to pass their tests along.
Exactly.
Because that will tell you exactly what's in the groundwater, you know, and going from there. And that's some, that's something that seems to be lost on DEP, for whatever reason.
They don't want to test.
No.
And we also, as we've said, with the DEP, looking at the soils, rather, the sand of the Cape versus our soil, and so we want to make sure that we articulate that.
We have those comparisons.
It doesn't take, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out what the, what types of soil is as soon as you dig into this, as soon as you dig into your own yard, so it doesn't. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the, the committee charge as presented.
I'd gladly second it.
Second?
Yep.
Any comments? Let's vote, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, I hear none. Pass unanimously, and I want to take this time to congratulate Mrs. Brooks on putting this together. This is a clear message. Did you teach in school at all, or something like that?
Yeah, I, I dabbled.
She is a, she's-
You did a, you did a good job.
I've said it before and I'll say it again, she's been a wonderful addition to this board and proud to have her with us, and it's issues like this, as a team, we're going to keep this together and make it work. So, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Thank you.
And everybody else who worked with you and gave you full cooperation. I'll go for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And I take it, there's no one in the audience who wants to comment on this particular issue? Mr., a few people who have commented every week are not here, but that's okay. Okay. And I just, would like to just add, I know there, I hear it all the time, and all of us do, people who are really like scared of what's going on, and we welcome your comments, we're working on it, and we, we're trying to give you places to give us information and talk about it, and then take action, because that's what it's going to take, Team Dartmouth all the way. Thank you. Next would be, oh, this is a great one here. Mass DEP responds to correspondence on New Bedford CSO issue. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, I just wanted to update the board. As you know, we submitted a letter to Mass DEP quite some time ago, asking for a joint meeting with the town of Dartmouth, Mass DEP, and the city of New Bedford to discuss the interim or temporary CSO permit that has been issued for the city of New Bedford. As you know, and people out there that have gotten notifications, there's a number of events that happen fairly regularly where New Bedford notifies this, has been a combined sewer outflow. It's, Chris Michaud, our Director of Public Health, has been here to talk about it and update on it, so we had not heard back from DEP. We did last week finally hear back from DEP about scheduling a meeting, and we are, they're working on logistics, so we will stay on them, and hopefully we can meet sometime either in March or early April to have a discussion about the effects of this permit that's been issued to the city of New Bedford.
We all look forward to that meeting.
Any comments on that? It's, any, no, any other action to take, or we just still waiting?
Well, I, I just wanted to say one thing, and because it came to me over the weekend, someone asked, "Why is this now an issue?" Like, what's changed? And my response is, what's changed is that they've had to notify us. They've legally had to notify us. So, the fact that there were probably this CSO overflow-
What's CSO stand for?
Combined Sewer Overflow.
Thank you, okay.
Has been happening for years without us being notified. So, the change now is that we're notified.
So, Mr. McGinnis, are we satisfied, just to wait for this response at this point?
Well, I mean, we hadn't received a response, so I had followed up with an email to Mass DEP, and they did get back to us with their response. So, I'm optimistic that they're willing to meet, so we will stay on them, but I just wanted to give the board an update, because previously to this meeting, I had not heard back, the issue had come up, so I said I would follow up.
So, the idea then that we'll bring it up again at the next meeting, in terms of any response or none, and maybe we want to take action if not?
I'll be honest with you.
Yes.
If we don't have any word of a meeting on, by the twenty-seventh of March.
Right, I agree.
I'm going to be livid.
I agree. And I, my recommendation is that we-
Another letter's not enough.
No.
No.
My recommendation is that we put on the twenty-seventh of March, put it on the agenda regardless of heard from or not, if we do find it or not.
It's hard to deal with a community, another community, you try to be nice, but when they have approximately twenty-some-odd pipes that go into the water on all around New Bedford.
Yep.
And it happens all the time, this, does the urgency, is the urgency there? No.
No. So, we will, it'll be on the agenda for the twenty-seventh.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We can move on now, anything? Okay, we're up to the Town Administrator update. Mr. McGinnis?
Yes, well, we just met last week, I don't have a whole lot, but as many people are aware or may not be aware, so there was a, the Barnstable Superior Court case last week, heard the case of CLF against the Mass DEP about the amendments, so there was a stay issued by the Barnstable Superior Court, so the Mass DEP amendments will not be, they've been delayed or postponed until May thirty-first of two thousand, of two thousand and twenty-three this year. Apparently, they received nine hundred comments in response to their proposed amendments, so.
From Dartmouth.
Probably, most of them. So, I just wanted to give the board an update, in case the, the public did not know. Some good news, Bristol County, as you know, has, is tasked with stewarding the ARPA funds, some of our ARPA funds, we received our first approval for one of our projects at twenty-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-five for DPW switchgear maintenance and repair. Right now, we have two other projects awaiting approval. The old police station site, the underground storage tank removal is complete. As you know, we had an issue with a small spill that was historic, not, not part of the tank removal, that was remediated and that, that's been signed off on, so that's complete. I just wanted to mention that there was a coastline legislative breakfast last week that discussed mental health, housing, and nutrition for the elderly. It was well-attended and very informative. There is a blood drive here in Town Hall in the Select Board Meeting Room on March thirteenth, so if people want to sign up, they can go to the Red Cross. And I mentioned last week, but the, and it wasn't sure, I know the date had changed, so Mass DOT is having a design public hearing for Route Six improvements from Font's Corner Mall Road to Hathaway Road. That is March twenty-ninth, Wednesday, at six P.M., right here in this room at Town Hall.
Is that a, is that a change?
Yes, they originally were trying to have it this week, on the eighth. And they had a scheduling issue, so they had to change.
This, this coming Friday, I think it was, right?
Uh, Wednesday.
The ninth, Thursday, the ninth.
Now it is the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, it will be, okay.
And lastly, Park and Rec is having their annual Easter egg hunt at Uponagansett Park on April first, at eleven-thirty A.M. for children ages three to seven, and it's free. That's all I have.
What is, what time is that state road hearing?
Six P.M.
Thank you.
And it's a-
It'll be in this-
Mass DOT, right?
Right here in this room, yes.
Yeah, Mass DOT State Road Hearing.
Twenty-ninth.
Just another state agency to get you mad at.
Will not be here, but I'm sure you guys can handle it. I want to see our direct traffic Hathaway Road, just so they can give a good report, John, okay?
Day before.
Okay. All business.
Yes, Bliss Corner, no new updates, the same with Lake Nookochoke and the municipal broadband, and you heard me-
I have a question on broadband.
Okay.
It's just a, a meek question, but I would ask Mr. McGinnis, Mr. McDonald this. As I walk regularly and I see these telephone poles with, it looks like cable wires that are wound around, and they are either, many, many of them are hanging and loose, and they flow in the wind, they're down low, they look pretty dangerous to me. Anybody seen, I'm, I'm talking about dozens of poles.
There's, there's, it's more than dozens.
No, that I've seen.
It's, it's hundreds, it's hundreds everywhere.
And these are just X.S.Y., they're just-
More than likely, it's X.S.Y., but you got to, you got to understand the hierarchy of the pole.
Okay.
All right, most of the poles in this area are owned by Verizon, some are also owned by Eversource.
Okay.
Or actually Commonwealth Electric, which became N-Star, blah, 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 and all that down. So, I mean, it's, it's a mishmash of ownership of poles. As far as, as far as the poles go, the top lines are the electrical service lines. Everything below that is telephone, cable, fire department, wiring, anybody but electric. And so, the question is, is it depends upon who you call. It all depends upon the number of the poles. Some poles with Verizon, I believe, begin with a T or a V. N-Star poles all have N numbers, and it depends on who you call, which is also a problem when a pole gets destroyed, and then you have the double pole. The problem why there's a double pole is, N-Star does their thing by putting electricity on, but then it takes Verizon forever, it takes Comcast forever, it takes sometimes the emergency services that have the wiring forever to do the wiring and to move the pole to get rid of the pole. That's the problem. So, it's-
So, Mike, I know this will get your, it gets your attention, so, and I don't want to make a big deal of it, but I'm talking, they look like cable wires to me, but they're down low when wound around the bottom.
Yeah.
And then they're hanging because they don't stay. They kind of just like knot them there, and of course, they get loose.
That's basically, I'm, I'll be, I'll be, if I'm, if I'm a betting man, which I'm not, I'll give you five bucks, I'll guarantee you that's Comcast.
I wouldn't bet against that. Are we concerned about that at all, they're hanging up loose?
There's no electricity in those things, so. If it's, if it's something way up top that's hanging, yeah, I wouldn't worry about that.
Yeah.
But I, no.
I wasn't, I was more concerned about a wire that kid could play with.
I get the same, I get the same problem. I mean, the same thing with my mother's house, there's about eight and nine wires coming in, and one of them's hanging down low, and she's worried about it. Don't worry about it. You're not going to hit it, as long as you don't hit it, as long as nobody hits it, you know, it's fine.
I want to congratulate you, you gave me the exact reaction I expected, thanks for the description.
Oh, I have a question for Mr. McDonald.
Okay.
Full expert. Well, for knowledge today, I guess, huh?
Well, I had a, a resident sent me some pics- Well, I had a, a resident sent me some pictures because a pole was installed on her lawn, and they cut through her sprinkler system.
Hmm, gosh.
So she asked, like, how do I find out who did this? So do we look for a, a letter on the pole?
Look for the letter on the pole. If it's a, then it's N-Star. The question is, there is a, is the pole close to the road, or is, all right, if the pole is close to the road, then I'll be honest with you, it's not, it's not N-Star's fault, it's the guy who installed the sprinkler system, because he shouldn't have put the sprinkler system close to the road.
Okay. All right.
He put the sprinkler system in basically the, the town property dee cement.
Right. We don't call Mr. McDonald answer man for nothing.
I know, this is, this is great information.
This happens more often than not.
Oh, God.
That people, that contractors don't do due diligence, and they, they infringe on the town's property.
Okay. Mrs. Brooks, you got that answer for you?
I, I...
Any other thing you want to add to all this, Ms. McDonald?
No.
Okay, you've done well enough, Mrs. McDonald, thank you. Okay, Title V amendments, I don't, assume we have no, no comments on that?
Just give an update on the stay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question.
Right ahead.
And I was, I was listening to WBSM this morning, and they were advertising for their show that comes on in the evening, and they said tonight was going to be a very important meeting because Senator Montigny and Representative Markey were going to be making an announcement regarding the, the whole Title V issue. And I have no idea what it's about, does anybody heard anything?
No, nothing here.
No.
No.
If they were...
Not in the state, probably.
We have a statement, not from Montigny, but that he feels that the governor will get involved at some point regarding the Title V issues.
Well, now, now that I'm going to ask, I, what the hell, I totally forgot, where are we on getting a meeting with the governor?
Have to ask Mr. Montigny.
Have we, have, have, Mr. McGinnis, have you heard anything about a meeting with the governor?
I have not.
After our request?
I have not.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
We can take that up on the 27th.
I like our government, but sometimes...
Take it up on the 27th, along with the other...
Well, hopefully, we'll hear something from them, but that'd be nice, you know, three weeks.
Maybe we can have a Zoom, a, a meeting on the road and drive to the governor's office.
She came down to New Bedford to go see water, so, I mean, you know...
I'm all for that. We'll sit in the governor's office.
See the dirty water.
We'll sit there and tell her she'll see us.
A sit-in, you call it?
Exactly. Like the old days.
On the WBSM website, to see if there's anything...
Frank, if you hear anything, if you hear anything about what happened with the WBSM, can you just email this, please?
Sure can.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, there are no minutes. Any comments now from the members of the Select Board?
I've said enough.
Yeah. For just this meeting, or others as well?
No, this is meeting.
Say some of it, the 27th.
All right, there'll be plenty on the 27th.
Yes, there will. Mr. Mc, Mcleven?
No.
Mrs. Brooks?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gracie?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I just had an additional comment, I was going to comment on the Coastline Adley Services. We had a nice group there, and it was really well-done, and we have been talking to the COA and the friends of the elderly, and I think that, I think we have a, we have a wonderful institution down there at the COA in the building, and I think there's, there's a lot more we can do in this presentation by Coastline and talk about the need when it comes to mental health, housing, nutrition, and senior social daycare, which is something that we are no longer doing in town, and it's, I'm not, it could be a consideration going forward, but there is a lot to do, and it was quite a meeting, and they'll give a, a real support system there to help us out and do what we should be doing, to give additional help as the population ages in our town.
That was excellent.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McDonald, any other comments?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Somehow, I thought you were going to say that. I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, okay, that's three seconds, okay, so that's a six.
Next meeting, Monday?